True.
Of our Guthrie Multiple Sports Complex Concept. Leroy, take it away.
Concept Plan.
I'm not going to go through this in detail, but this is basically the presentation that we made.
He's boring.
Right in the last meeting.
I hope.
He is boring.
Okay.
Okay, I messed with my glasses.
I'm so tired.
I'm sorry.
By the way.
That's better. Keep going. There you go.
Can I give you that permanent to this right of the?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead. This is, of course, the task force that was appointed and we went through the project. So I'm just kind of quickly running through that soccer will be developed in place where they're at now. We went through the cost fourteen million dollars. We talked about the industrial site and if we got that industrial site and could get a grant to do the utilities, then it would reduce the cost of the sports complex project.
Do you have any idea how much it would cost Leroy?
One point two million.
About a million dollars, I think. We talked about breaking it into phases with the softball complex being phase one. And phase one roughly six million, of course, when we get into the details, that may come down a little bit if we do some value engineering. We haven't done an economic impact study on this particular project, but there's kind of some highlights of some other places on how they have brought people in town. Our sports complex task force originally looked at a variety of funding. We look back at the CIP sales tax survey that was done and youth activities was number three, but then there was several related activities that were lower, like the sports complex was a nineteen on that survey. A little confusing to try and interpret that survey. And I can go back through these in discussion. I highlight this in red tonight because when our former city manager had come up with a spending plan for the CPI money, roughly estimated about nineteen million dollars. Youth and sports activities in that category, he had budgeted two point three million dollars and sports complex was one of those.
Nice.
That wasn't going to get where we need to be. Two million dollars is not going to build a sports complex. But that, that will come up again later in my discussion. Phase one funding, task force initially recommended motel tax rate going from four to eight percent. Pursue some limited funding of the CIP tax apply for the land and water conservation grant. Maybe look at foundations, participation from Langston. And then continue to run the facilities like we are now where the various leagues combine them all together and they would do the operations, the actual programming and mowing and maintaining. We would just do major improvements.
But we're already looking into most of that, right?
Correct.
Okay.
We talked about where we were as far as the motel tax rate in Guthrie as compared to other communities. At our last meeting, we looked at what the motel tax, yes, it's down this year. For the first five months, if you look at this, we are at ninety-eight thousand this year where we were at a hundred and twenty at the same period last year. But we're still ahead of all the other years. All the other, the two previous years. So kind of like in sales tax, last year seemed to be a banner year, but we're still ahead of the two prior years.
Nice laser.
Then we, we looked at the different levels. If you do five percent, leave the four percent programmed the way it is. Five percent off the top goes to admin, to the general fund. And then after that, then roughly two thirds of the balance goes to tourism or the convention visitor bureau and the third to parks. We use that money now, so if you reprogram that money, that means you're going to have to not do something you're doing now. But if you, the additional percentage, five percent would generate for the sports complex, about fifty-six thousand in that range, you know, it will fluctuate just like any tax does. Six percent, a hundred and twelve, seven, a hundred and sixty-eight, and eight percent would be two hundred and twenty-four. And then I just simply took that, multiplied it by ten years and then by fifteen years to show what revenue. If you do a bondage and borrow against that, of course, some of that will go to interest. And that's what this shows. If you, if you look at the, the three point three million that you would get if you did eight percent over fifteen years, you'd get about two point five because about eight hundred thousand, of course, would be consumed in interest based on this one proposal we got.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Jail, what have we got, three quarter of a cent that we've given to the jail? The new jail that, for the county?
Oh, you mean sales tax that was passed by the county?
Correct. What is that?
My understanding, a portion of that goes to rural fire departments. A portion goes to jail and there may be a portion goes somewhere else.
Roads.
Roads. So it's divided up.
Does that sunset, does that have a sunset on it?
I would assume that it probably does, but I don't know.
Well, so it's got to be coming up.
Six, seven, eight years left.
Yeah. That many, it was only on the one that we're talking about for the jail?
Yeah.
That's been way more than three years ago though.
No, they paid their first one off.
Wasn't it?
It's a new one. It's a new one.
They re-upped it or something.
Yes.
Did it go?
Yeah, because I think they even changed the formula. The first time, I think more of it was going to the jail. And then when they re-upped it, they, they changed the distribution.
One percent to, or one penny to three quarters.
They didn't change the rate, they just continued it, so.
And they added the roads.
If we're going to apply this year for a land and water conservation grant, we would need to have the election in time for July thirty-first. When we submit the application so that we could document that it passed, that we would have the matching funds. So with not any more meetings in April, if we decide to do this, our next meeting's on May seventh. And if we adopt that resolution to call special election for motel or sales tax, that would mean that we would have an election on July ninth.
How much is that land and water grant?
We could reasonably expect to get roughly a million dollars.
Okay.
And if we miss that deadline, then it's another year?
Correct.
For that fund.
An election, a special election costs us, what, fifteen grand or something?
No?
Yeah, it's like maybe under five thousand.
Oh, okay.
This slide just shows our sales tax collectively with the state, the county and the city, we're at nine percent. There are some below us, but they don't have, of course, the county sales tax, several of them. And there are some that are higher, the highest in our region is Piedmont, they're at nine point eight five percent. Spencer's at nine and a half.
They don't have any county tax.
Correct.
It does have one in the city. Oklahoma County does.
Well, that's county. If Oklahoma County put one on, they are going to be way.
And then if you look at, ranked them, just looking at the city portion, and we're at three point seven five, but you can see city sales tax, there are several cities that have higher city sales tax. I mean Piedmont's at five percent, we're at three point seven five, Spencer's at five, DeKalb Park's at five, Midwest City's four point six, Village is four point five. So there's several cities that their, their city portion of sales tax has higher than ours. But then you also have to look at the total. So we looked at alternate funding at the last meeting and we, we talked, you know, just threw out different options for discussion. Here's the sales tax. If you did an eighth of a percent, quarter percent, half percent, this is what it would generate annually based on our last year's revenue, one percent. So that's what it would generate over five years, over ten years. So if you look at a ten-year special, one eighth percent sales tax over ten years, it would generate roughly two point three million dollars. And then if you took the motel tax and from four to six, over ten years, that would generate a million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, so that would generate roughly three point three for over ten years.
Over ten years.
Option two, we looked at five-year at a quarter percent and two point two five again. And then the motel tax from four to six. Then option three, we looked at a ten-year special quarter cent instead of five, ten, it'd be four and a half million. And motel tax at five would be one point one, that would give you five point six. And with value engineering, you're getting closer to doing phase one, even if you don't get successfully in getting a grant from OTRD, the land and water conservation fund. Because there's no guarantee you're going to get that.
I thought you said that the probability was pretty good for getting that grant.
Well, you know, I go bet, I go bet a lot of places and the probability's good, but it doesn't mean I'm guaranteed.
No, there are no guarantees, I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that.
So, you know, I'm not going to bet my first child on it because I kind of like him, but. Now.
What was the outlay for phase one again?
About six million.
Six.
If, if you, the softball complex. Now, I'm throwing out two dream options. You know, I, I made a similar presentation to the Lions Club and I told them that I thought that I probably ought to went and got a catcher's mask to wear in case they throw this stuff at me. But just for discussion purposes, if, you know, if you go and do it, you ought to try to do it right. We don't want to start a project and not have enough funding for it. Dream option number one, if you did a ten-year, you increase motel tax for eight percent. Over a ten-year period, it would generate two point two million dollars. It would not sunset in this proposal. And you did a ten-year quarter percent sales tax, it would generate four point five million. So that would generate six point seven million dollars over ten years. And then if you got a million dollar land and water conservation, that would give you seven point seven million dollars. The other thing, remember that in the early proposal from prior city manager on the CIP tax, talked about two point three for projects that included the sports complex. So if you took two million from the
CIP.
CIP, you added the, the ten years of motel tax at eight percent and you added the quarter percent over ten years and it would sunset, the language, it would sunset when ten years elapsed. Then you're up to eight million, get a million dollar grant, you're up at nine point seven million. So you definitely would have enough money to do phase one and maybe some others. The reason I showed on these two dream ones, if you leave the motel tax on permanently, it would generate two hundred and twenty-four thousand annually for, like if you had to replace a fence or a lighting system, something major, you would have some funding to do that. And on the agenda tonight, I, I just listed questions because I think there's a logical sequence to go through. Of course, you know, some people say we shouldn't do anything but water and sewer lines because that's the most important thing in town. So, you know, how does the sports complex prioritize out in relation to all the other needs in our community? The proposed location, the complex at East College Avenue and Midwest Boulevard, are we happy with that? The conceptual plan, the various specific improvements, projected cost estimate, complete project versus phase one, divided it into three phases. The water and sewer utility extensions, funding format. And then finally, once we get through all those questions, are we ready to move forward with the project or not?
Well, I have a question too with this. With all these dream options and in a perfect world, if we were going to do this, it's looking like the taxes were passed and everybody went, it looks like a hundred percent of this tax is going to go to the sports complex.
Correct.
We have other things in town like the swimming pool and other, other parks and recreational things around town. How do we fund that? If this, if a hundred percent of all this money goes there and even the two million out of the funding from the CIP, is that, how do we carry on with what we have? Because that swimming pool is, is been, is getting close. I mean, they keep that thing together with baling wire.
You would have to do something similar. I mean, it comes down to choices.
And then they just pass another tax on top of what we're already doing to fund that at that point?
It, it comes down to choices. Clearly, the swimming pool is reaching the end of its life cycle. And if you decided to build another swimming pool, you're probably looking at a four, five million dollar project.
Or if you did an enclosed or
Even more.
Oh, even more.
You're looking at probably
But my understanding, and I could be wrong, but my understanding before I came here to see manager, the city council had already decided not to do the new swimming pool project.
Well, it was the water park that, there was this giant splash pad water park is what was being.
We already redid all the infrastructure on the pool. That pool, I bet, is around another five plus, you know.
Well, it should hold on for a while.
I mean, I think that's a moot point right now.
Well, I'm just saying, but
But the eight percent that carries on, it'd be nice to have that set up for city recreational facilities instead of just the sport complex.
Right.
I think is what he's saying.
No, I'm, I'm
If we do it that way, there's nothing, nothing locked in stone.
Right.
All I'm trying to do is get themed out. Of course, I, when I made the presentation to the Lions Club, on the first slide, I showed all the people that were involved in the task force that come up with these recommendations and stuff. And I said, you know, if it's successful, all those people will be at the ribbon cutting. If it goes to hell in a handbasket, the last name on the list is the only one people will remember, that was mine.
That was Leroy.
There's nothing wrong with that.
What are the, what's the, anything of what we're looking at? Do they have any ideas?
I think the committee
Are they okay with the thing?
The committee is very sincere in their thoughts that they do not want to have an adverse impact on motels.
Okay.
I, I
I agree with that.
Yeah, I think that when you look at bread and breakfast, you can look at it a lot of different ways, but my understanding of bread and breakfast is most people stay at those because that's a lifestyle choice or a location choice, not because they don't stay at B and Bs because it's the cheapest option.
Right.
Now, I know if you have somebody that has a B and B, you may get a different opinion. So I'm just giving you an opinion based on my understanding. Motels a little bit different. You know, there's a lot of places that have eight percent for motels. There's a lot of people that will tell you that the rate of the motel tax has limited impact on where people stay. I think there's a series of things on our motels. One, right now, we probably have more motel rooms than we have traffic. They were probably overbuilt at one time and even have some price wars to some degree going on, on motel rates. And I've talked to people that have worked at motels and they said that the motel, in their opinion, motel tax really didn't, wasn't a deciding factor. Now, H.C. Patel, who's here tonight, explained his situation was a little different because he deals with people that have a per deal. And they roll the, the tax and everything into that per deal. So they look at his rates different than the average tourist or traveler.
Well, that's a net loss margin to him immediately.
Yes, yes. So, so his situation may be even more unique than a lot of motels. But, but I think there's room somewhere, whether you do five percent or six percent, I still think there's some room for additional motel tax. I think that, again, these are all just my opinions that I'm throwing out and my opinion doesn't count for a whole lot because I don't have a vote. But I think if you go to the voters, if, if we decide that the sports complex is a high enough priority to try to move the project forward, I think you take it to the voters and let the voters decide. If, if they want to contribute additional sales tax to this project, then they'll vote. I think it's, it's a lot cleaner where you have an earmark for a specific project. We won't get a repeat of passing a CIP program that has a list of a hundred projects and it's got nineteen million dollars and all those projects probably add up to fifty million. So if you do it geared towards a specific project, it's going to be easier for the city and the residents to track it and say, yes, that's how much money is generated and yes, it did go to that project.
The only question that I see is, you know, a lot of the people that helped elect me were really interested in the CIP going to the sports complex. And I think they've realized now as much as we have that we're not bringing enough to do the sports complex if we devoted it all to the sports complex. So there's no way for us to do that. But we did, they did kind of vote on this, voted on the CIP based on the sports complex. And I'm worried that they're going to come back and say, wait a minute, you already told us you were going to give us one.
And I think they understand that out of that proposal, only two and a half million dollars was budgeted out of that nineteen for sports complex. I have found many of the projects that were in that initial list were underestimated.
Yeah, this thing
It's easy for me to put on a piece of paper, I'm going to give you these ten projects. If I can underestimate them, I'm not the guy that has to deliver.
Not only that, three years, four years past
We'd been blown out.
We, we didn't even have the land when we were talking about it. So this price would have been even more expensive because this land is free. Quote, unquote, free.
You don't have to divide it.
I think the basic question, going back to the initial question of, is this the top or a top priority that we want to say to the voters, we think this is a significant, I don't know, I don't know if we want to say it's the top priority, but it is a top priority. In my mind, it is. It's something for our children, it's something that has potential for generating revenue for our, for our, our, our city. I think it sets a culture for our city. I think it just has positives up and down on a, on a large scale. And I think it can be successful. I think our location, again, on I-35, it can be a draw from for visiting, traveling softball squads, adult and in youth. I think it's, I think it has, I think it has long range potential for impacting throughout our community.
A lot of potential.
And outside our community. I think it's a positive thing. I think, I think it's something that we should take to, I, I like actually having a little bit of the CIP money into it. But clearly, clearly, CIP was not going to be able to even come close, wasn't going to get to first base. Wasn't going to get to first base.
Let's take a look at this up here. This is phase one. Okay, I think that we're all in violent agreement that this would be awesome for our community, our children, our families, our growth, everything involved. Okay? But this is phase one and that's a ten-year phase one. Are we talking about a thirty-year completion here? Or what are we talking about? Maybe we need to go back to the drawing board and redraw this sports complex on what we're looking at here. Okay, and that's something that I've been meaning to just throw out here on the table because we have one rendering of it, of someone's idea. And maybe we need to relook at that. And then we need to also relook at how much in kind we're going to be able to put in it from dirt work to everything else that's involved in it. Okay, we might have to get our engineering company to maybe throw in a little gratis on the deal.
Well, I think you've got a really good point there because we don't want to get a third of the way in this and they don't want to do the rest.
Yeah, and then the rest of it.
Exactly, we're not going to be around, guys. We might, may not be around after next meeting. Me, anyway, sure. I'm just saying, the fact of the matter is, that is the reality. Okay, if you're trying to bank stuff and, and, and really spread the, spread the dime, you know, to the end of the world and make it a dollar, it's a thirty-year project based on this.
I, I would point out that each phase is being done where it could be a standalone project. So if you didn't go forward, it's not like the softball complex is missing some of the support things they need for it to be a quality sports complex.
Where did I just see one in, what was, where's the one on the side of the highway of, just?
Chickshet.
I could have sworn I saw one in Moore. Isn't there one in Moore between Moore and Norman or my maids' yard, Moore? Because I just made a trip back.
Hartford.
Is that the one? Okay, because I just made that example and I was looking at that. How much is theirs? You know? And theirs is a nice footprint. I mean, maybe we're way overbuilding this thing, maybe we're not. I don't know.
I think it depends somewhat on your goal and Chris could probably elaborate on this more. Because he's probably been to more, more events than me at least. But if your goal is to serve our youth, serve our adult groups and provide a facility that's going to bring tourists or sports tourists to town to compete in games and tournaments.
It's got to be nice.
You've got to have a quality thing.
Yeah, yeah, but
Now, I'm not saying it can't be value engineered and we can't knock the price down, but there is a limit that we don't want to go below or we're not going to have something we're going to be proud of as a community.
Is it really a thirty-year project though? I understand your point, but I mean, that's the payout on it. How long is it going to take to build it? And when could you start phase two? Say the, the jail tax is gone, maybe we can move into there in five or six years, whenever that's gone and we can start phase two if we were able to get in on that?
Is that ever gone?
It's, it's sunset.
But they just redid it again? How does that happen?
Six years.
Twenty twenty-five, but they're going to, they're going to want that back.
Oh, yeah. Well, the other thing is only, there's only one, there's only one million dollar grant in there. I mean, is there other, are there other, other grant possibilities or are there other money possibilities besides just that one, one million dollar grant?
I know when we visited with Lieutenant Governor, he had expressed that this was a project that he thought would set Guthrie apart and he was very excited about it. And he was willing to try to work with us to find some other funding. This is, the land and water conservation fund is probably the only readily identifiable grant for this specific type purpose, park improvements. That we've not pursued any foundation money. We don't want to start grooming relationships with foundation for a sports complex if that's not what we're going to do. But yes, we could pursue other funding, but the land and water conservation fund is probably the only one that's geared towards CDVG. For our size community, there's not any community development block grant money targeted toward park improvements like this.
You know, I, I think that ultimately we've got to, we've got to convince the citizens that this is a good investment for our community. And I think what, what you're proposing, Brian, is looking And I think what, what you're proposing, Brian, is looking at, looking at obviously larger cost. I mean, there's gonna be a larger cost. I don't know if it's three times as much, uh, but, you know.
Right up.
But, but, but I'd just say it's twice as much as sleeping. To fit, to do the whole complete thing.
I'm saying maybe take the whole plan back to the drawing board and redraw what this thing looks like at the end of the day.
Hope stuff.
With, with, I'm talking about.
We're not talking about just the different.
I'm not talking about this plan. I'm talking about a full sports complex. I'm at eighty acres. That is not that plan. Okay? It's a total different plan with cost, with quality and cost in mind in every aspect of building that plan.
I, I think, you know, ultimately, hopefully fourteen million is the high side. I think we can hopefully, if, perfect, of course, you gotta look at fourteen million because that's what, that's what you're facing right now. Hopefully with the land acquisition there, the sewer line that takes down a million, then in-kind stuff, so hopefully we're not looking at that. But redrawing the, the concept of the plan, I think the only way you can maybe save money is that each of those pods have a intersection of concession stand and there's three pods. I mean, that's the only way, maybe taking a pod out is the only way saving money and having a remote bathroom, remote concession stand for, one, one concession stand for all three field or pods is the only way I think I can say.
Or, or hoping it all in-kind, a lot of in-kind, uh, if it doesn't have to be brought right back to the original drawing board, may, you know, what does the in-kind look like? Does the in-kind look like that we can contribute four million to the project? Or does it look like we can contribute eight?
He addressed it, uh, adapting CIP money at that point.
Well, okay, because here's what you got coming, guys. Okay? You got a wastewater treatment plant that's about the same amount of money. Okay? That if we don't do something about, okay, you're gonna have entire chunks of this town not being able to flush their toilet. Okay? At one point in time, because that keeps getting kicked down the road. It's been kicked down the road for, ever since I've known. And so, that's all I'm saying. I mean, if you, if you wanted to prioritize, I think it's a priority. I think sports complex is a priority, but I think everything is. I think that is too. It's just like if this, it's just like if this, if this school bomb passes, it's gonna be huge for this town.
But, okay, so I was, maybe I was misunderstanding. I thought you were saying, go back to the drawing board in terms of design and everything. I think the task force has worked really hard in, in looking at different designs and coming up with different options. And I think they've done, done a good job. I, I would hate to go back to ground zero.
But maybe it's the drawing board on the cost of everything and figuring out how, like, for example, how much is the engineering on it? Million dollars, you know, type thing? You know, a fourteenth of the cost. Come on.
Thirty percent contingency fees going in that too.
Yeah. But it's time to, you know, to get some donations going here on some of this stuff that we pay these companies big dollars every month on. You know? Just a thought. Might not be my thought after a couple more meetings, but it's a thought.
Do we know any, about any rich people that really wanna give the money away?
I found the money.
Keep, keep digging, Brian.
Keep digging.
Oh, boy. What's up, R G?
I wish we could do anything, but how do you do that around here?
Chris, I have a question for you. Just on phase one, how many teams can we bring on a, on a tournament?
Five. Uh, we, I was at a ball.
Max out.
Wait, there was one field and there were seven teams from one field.
No, for, for what? For our, for our.
One spur?
On phase one, how many teams can you handle on a tournament?
Forty-five, fifty teams. Mike would know better, probably.
How many fields?
Uh, five fields.
On that one spur?
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Five or six, yeah. We played on one field this weekend, ten hundred baseballs, seven teams for one field.
So would that be a good-sized tournament? Could it hold like an NIA?
Ed, they kept it at seven, seven teams.
I'm just thinking aloud, how about phase one and then developed industrial park?
I don't know that you wanna have them both at the same area.
I'm just talking softball fields right now.
That's, that's a different. No, I don't, I mean, for that eighty year.
That's different meeting.
That's a whole layers.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Um, but the, the one thing that we haven't gone into yet is the increase in your business.
Well, I'm looking at that, yes.
Well, what is the benefit gonna be?
Oh, yeah.
Is it gonna be worth it for you to pay eight percent?
Well, I don't know about eight percent.
If they're bringing in, if they're bringing in an extra fifty teams and let's say you got twenty teams worth of.
Two point eight or a quarter.
That's a lot of business, you know? And it, it would actually be a problem with that. But it's gotta get to that point.
Look at that. And it's about twenty percent of that project.
Yeah. How long will it take to put this together?
I understand. It's still about twenty percent of the project.
So, maybe eighteen. So just phase one, how much would phase one cost in ten years?
Six, three mil.
Well, hang on a second. Hang on a second. How long does it gonna take for us to do that?
Phase one.
So it's right there.
Well, if we sit right now, how long?
One, we'd have to wait till after auction, make sure we had the funds. I would think it would be done next summer sometime. This will be about a year.
Well, it'll probably be two years because you'd have to take a year to book all your teams in for tournaments. You know, you get.
Well, I'm just talking about getting the project completed, not getting all the. Now, in this cost estimate, there are some things, because we, we do have a splash pad, basketball courts, those kind of things. So, I mean, it, there are things that could be taken out of, that are in phase one, but in the total project.
Walking trails.
Uh, walking trails. Go from, you know, asphalt parking lots to gravel. I mean, there are some things we can do to bring it down, but it's still gonna take more money than what's in the CIP to do the project.
But how much can you take it, I'm sorry, how much can you take it down if you eliminated the splash pad, the trails, anything unrelated to baseball and soccer? If soccer's gonna be there, but baseball, softball.
Softball, just softball.
Okay, so baseball, softball, how much, just so it's only related to that with concession, how much are we looking at cutting off that tab?
I don't know that I could give you an answer off the top of my head. I would need to, I don't know that it'd be half.
So see, imagine if we could cut half off it, or, or twenty-five, thirty percent off it and then have a sit-down with Myers Engineering on this two point eight million.
Yeah, remember a lot of that's contingency.
I understand. But it seems that those contingencies always end up being paid.
And there's a lot of, my concern is if we start, you know, for instance, like going to, to gravel instead of asphalt, once you start to, to.
Yeah, you don't think you wanna do that?
You, you start to be, it starts to be a turnoff for doing what we wanna do, which is offer a quality, quality area, not for our kids, but also to attract people coming in.
I think we do a first trigger, we don't do it.
Yeah, I think so too, Jim. I think, uh, I, I, I think, I think that's the direction we need to go.
That's gonna say so much about.
Don't ignore Phil. You're ignoring Phil.
And I think, you know, if you get.
He's not gonna ignore you, Phil.
If you get success in phase, uh, success breeds success. And, uh, you know, we're, we're successful in phase one.
See, that looks nice.
That's a lodging tax.
And that's one field, or two?
It's a comp.
Yeah. Well, that's nice. Yeah, I mean, they, and that's in a token.
So what I'm saying is if we made it a straight baseball or softball sports complex without the water parks and all that, you know, we need to, how can we, how can we make a rational decision, anybody, if we don't have those numbers? You know, I can't.
Yeah, but then again, do we want a park that's devoted to one thing I'm like? A park that's not gonna be used unless we're playing baseball?
No, I'm talking about to get it built on the front end to start bringing the tournaments in. Once you start bringing the tournaments in, you increase your tax base, okay? When you increase your tax base, you have more money. And when you have more money, you can start building more.
I understand, I'm trying to understand what you're saying.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. Okay? It's kinda like, if you need to, you need an SUV, you know, do you go buy a Tahoe or do you have to buy a Denali? Well, when you get the Tahoe, it might be seventy grand, but the Denali might be a hundred and ten. Okay? Big difference. Okay? And so I'm just saying, maybe we do the Tahoe side of it, which is the original fields and everything that we want through the three phases of the project, right up front, and cut everything else out of it, and then when the tax base is built, we come in and we start adding it in.
Kind of, kind of cup parts do we get with that Tahoe?
Nah.
I don't think they want anymore Tahoe. Not right now.
No, but I, yeah, I like what you're saying, just get the whole thing done so we can get the people here, get them in there and get the, I'm talking about the fields like you're talking about there.
I guess, question.
But it still has to be nice enough to draw them too, where they go, oh, this is nice. And then it, so they do, cause these other, cause there's indoor batting, I mean, you're looking at this or is it?
Batting cages.
Yeah, what's Edmonton, what's Edmonton sports complex look like?
Indoor stuff.
Uh, it's all, well, they got two, they got.
I'm giving the location.
The one that Haverhill, I go to all the time, is all baseball courts. They probably have ten or twelve, and then they have Mitch Park, which is baseball and softball complex. It's, there's no basketball courts, there's no.
Are they bringing big tournaments, big tournaments into that?
Every weekend.
So it's not that we have to have the splash pads and the basketball courts and everything to do that?
So a question from staff time. We, I don't think the task force or staff have any objection of mind going back and giving a more definitive plan, uh, and hone the cost estimates. But before we spend a lot of time on that, I think it's important that, to have some feedback from the council. You know, if, if this isn't the project that we wanna do and go forward, uh, because we're gonna have to make choices, we can't do every project. If it's not one of our top priorities, then there's no need spending a lot of staff time and volunteer time going back through it again and so on. And then secondly, are we willing to look at an additional sales tax or increased motel tax, whether it goes from four to five, or four to six, or four to eight? Is there room there where the council would feel comfortable taking it to the people to ask for some additional tax dollars? Because even if we hone this, there's still probably gonna have to be outside support above the CIP, the current CIP tax.
Okay, so first question, is it, is it one of the top priorities? Haven't heard much from this end of the table.
You're just listening, but I think it is.
Well, we have, we gotta hear from you.
I, I think it is. It has to. Because like, Chris and I've talked about this, when I've talked to other people to, Chickasha is, I think, where all of our tournaments are now, aren't they? Where they go to, Chris, a lot of them.
Yeah, it's in there. Well, I'm in Chickasha.
And I've been to, I've played at Edmund, and so I know what it's like. It's, it's a good place to go to. I'd rather have something here, I don't wanna go off somewhere.
Is it build it and they will come? But they're probably this way.
Yeah, I think so. Field of dreams. I think we're all in agreement.
I think, I think it's gotta get done soon. I mean, if they're going, if they're going all the way to Chickasha, I mean, while they stop, they come here.
But I agree to him as.
Just recently.
I really, I really feel like we oughta build as much as we can, stretch it to begin with, and slowly add back in some of those things after maybe a year to see if we can really push it. I don't like building just one area at a time and doing everything with it. I want it open so we can do a lot.
See? I, I'm gonna agree with what she said there. The, the idea of phasing it differently is, is smarter, I think, to, to grow it a different way than to say pod, pod, pod in those kinds of phases, but to grow it sort of more gangly. You know, if you build it, they come, then they pay for the growth of it. And that makes sense to me. But on the other hand, I, I also know that water treatment plant is still in the back of my mind.
The water treatment or the wastewater?
Wastewater treatment. Wastewater treatment, that's what I'm thinking of. But, um, that's, that's a priority.
And on the wastewater treatment plant, if I might interject there, the plans are that four million of the nineteen million, the CIP goes towards the wastewater treatment plant. We are setting that aside every year. There was some funding that was originally thought would go from utility rates, revenue to the wastewater treatment plant, but over the years, as the general fund demands grew, that fund was, some of those funds were transferred to make the general fund. We have started weaning ourselves slowly off of that money. And then in twenty, twenty, about five years out, our water plant will be paid for. So other than the four million going out CIP, the balance of the wastewater treatment plant could, should come from utility revenues, not sales tax.
In addition to my comment, I also think that if we satisfy the sports complex initially and get it working and people coming in, hotels full, I think that people will be more receptive to funding the wastewater treatment plant because it'll be a necessity at that time. They've already received the bonus.
All right, objects. Why? Haven't we found the, the water treatment plant?
We didn't. We're still paying for it. We just refinanced it in December.
Utility rights, you totally raised that money.
Yeah.
Okay.
We refinanced that thing, it was almost the original amount.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
We are still paying.
Price that back.
So Ed?
Yes.
On board?
Yes, I think that this is something we need to do for the city. I think that, again, I agree with, it needs to, maybe the way we phase it needs to be looked at differently. I think doing the entire project pods and then building the niceties and the nice amenities, build that into it, that comes with the use and as many people, and it comes in with the other money that we're gonna get from the people using it.
And put up a sign that says work in progress, so that, I mean, you know, kind of let.
What are your thoughts on that, Chris? I mean, if you had the master plan and a big poster out there, a big board out there, how it was gonna be in the future, but they saw the base of the fields already done and having the tournaments there, I mean, would that be a benefit? I mean, you could think that they would go, look, it's coming.
I think so. I, everywhere you go on construction sites, our future place is coming soon. In addition to that, gets people excited, people talk about something to build toward. And so, and to be honest with you, and Leroy knows more than I do about estimates and engineering and all that good stuff, but I heard fourteen million, I thought that's, I think we'd get a little less than that, but that was just me thinking this. So hopefully it's not fourteen million, but you guys gotta look at it because that's what's in front of you, so.
Well, so what happened is if it's of anybody's interest, I just hit over two hundred and fifty doors here recently, literally, and talked to people that do vote. Okay? And one of the big things that I was told, not in every household, but in, in a lot of households, is.
And there's the, that's what.
Stop the taxing. Okay? Big time. Because we're already bleeding it. Uh, we're already not shopping here, they're already going other places and shopping. Grocery stores were a big thing, I'm not gonna buy here and pay nine percent. Well, you know what? The difference in nine percent and eight and three quarters isn't that much. Okay? It's just not. But it's a thought that if we start increasing that to nine and a quarter, nine and a half, that's what they don't wanna see. And so we have to find another way.
Unfortunately, Guthrie is so close to Edmund, Oklahoma City, that we are the same exact tax as Edmund is at three point seven five. Oklahoma County's the most, is the richest county of all because they don't have a county tax. Therefore, it's three quarters cheaper than what we are. As far as, as far as the city, we're, we're exactly even as that.
Plus they get four and a half from everybody.
Of course, that leads, that, that leads into then, if we're in, if we're in, in sync, that this is a high priority, how do we wanna fund?
Yeah.
Do we run, do we do a tax?
Yeah, we're back to the, back to the, not to the drawing board, but to the, to the financial side of how do you do it?
I think a combination, a small, a small increase with the hotel motel, a small increase on sales. And I think if, if the CIP had some skin in that game, I think that would be a good, good thing from my perspective in terms of, in terms of presenting and, and selling this to the citizens that are going to have to vote on it. It's going to have to, you know, citizens are going to have to vote on it. So you got to keep that in mind. What will they, what will they vote for?
Something that will bring, bring in more revenue.
I think this is a no-brainer. I think we have to do this.
So, allocation.
Now, into the house. So, you know, those options there, that Leroy's got on the board right now, or, you know? I think, I think we're all in agreement, the hotel motel can't carry this ship.
Before we can make a decision on that, we kind of have to know what this, this bleached-out version of the, of the complex would look like. So, kind of what I'm hearing is, one, go back and look at the plans and see, one, value engineering, but still have a quality project. What things can we take out that could be done later, like tennis court or those kind of things that aren't specific to softball, baseball? Look at how much of it we can do in-house that could save contractor fees. Then come back with a refined number that maybe has more detail to it with a proposal on how we might phase it, whether we do one pod or maybe parts of two pods and let the task force be involved in that recommendation. And then a proposal of some sort that would include in-kind labor using our city crews, money from the, a limited amount of money, up to two million from the CIP, some increase in motel tax, potentially some increase in sales tax. And both of those are above. And then we would, each year, you can apply for Land and Water Conservation Fund. So, you know, even if we don't make this year, as we do future phases, we can apply for Land and Water Conservation Fund grants every year.
I want to add something in. This was not my idea, I'm not this smart, but this is a great idea. Maybe speaking with Loves, with a partnership with Loves, because they would be one of the greatest benefits of this, in their local Oklahoma company, I think, in a Loves partnership, whether it be Loves Fields in Guthrie or something, that would be...
We can wear a lot of uniforms.
Loves uniform.
Hey, there's a lot of, there's a lot of traction in that. That's corporate sponsorship, that builds.
Have a big red...
And they have many benefits from it. They got two, two stores right there.
Could be Love Field.
Love Field, that's a perfect name.
Loves complex.
It might be a plan as an airplane now.
Hey, they can have Subway sandwiches right there and everything else.
Okay, so what else, what else do you need? What else do you need from us?
I think that's what we need to know. It's going to change the timing. We probably won't have election in time to apply for Land and Water Conservation Fund this year. But I think what we need to do is make sure we're all on the same board and same page as we move forward. So we will go back and work with the task force, so with Myers Engineering, and see what we can come up with that involves in-kind labor, scales certain themes back that maybe we can add later. We do quality, but maybe we don't do as much. And then bring that back with some funding proposal that would be a combination of in-kind labor grants, two million out of the CIP, and then some increase in motel tax and potentially a increase in sales tax with a sunset provision for your all's consideration.
And maybe a partnership.
Correct. The bigger the partnership, the less the tax.
I agree. Yeah, what's happening.
Yeah. All right. Right? It's good? Good to go. All right? We're going to miss that deadline. You know, I, I'm relatively newbie here, but how many, how many times has this community visited a sports complex?
Four or five?
I think we've come pretty far on this one.
We get a little bit further. But we never quite get to the, to the ring. We got to, we can do it this time. We can do it.
Leroy, to ask a question, has the staff looked at any other options of price points?
Price points?
I mean, as far as what the overall cost would be, or if there's been in-kind?
That's what we're going to do.
No, no, I'm just, I was just wondering, has that been, has that been looked at?
We have already started doing some exercise in what we can do in-house, but we're not to that point to throw in numbers out tonight.